Good evening. I am going to call to order the special meeting of the city council for August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Adler.
Here.
Councilmember Dwayneat.
Present.
Councilmember Rubio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Veros.
Here.
And Mayor Armstrong.
Here. Okay, our first and only order of business is to do planning commission interviews and appointment. And so before our first candidate arrives, or are you the first candidate? I'm gonna make just an opening comment, so if I could just ask you to stand by for a minute. This is just a general comment, I'm really gonna just talk to the council members. Okay. Alright, so first thing we need to do, in addition to the interviews and selecting a planning commissioner, is to determine if we want to do a waitlisted person, if we have qualified candidates to do that. And if we, and how many waitlisted persons if there are enough qualified ones?
I would recommend one, because if you're, you know, you can do two if you'd like, but...
Okay, and the other thing I want to get from the council is if we do one or two or however many, what term is it valid for? Because do we want it to go for a whole four years? Or just like a ninety day period or something like that? You know, because there may be other candidates that might present themselves that didn't apply at this time. If we did need to kind of move to another person and maybe the landscape will have changed. So I'd like to get some thoughts on waitlisting. How many? And well, first, do we want to do it? Then how many? And then for how long is that waitlist valid before we just recast and get a whole new group of candidates? If there were to be a need for a candidate before the term expires.
Sorry, I thought I was... So I think it would be great. I agree with our Joan. I think one would be good as a backup, just in case. In terms of the term, I would say until we hold our next round of interviews. And then fill that vacancy.
So you say the list would be good for, well, that would be probably two years then?
So if, say, if we lose somebody, we have one backup, so they would automatically fill that seat until two years from now, basically. Or whenever, you know, because it's every two years that we, it's staggered.
Yeah.
So we would interview for that seat from scratch when we have our regular round of interviews again, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
Well, that's longer than I thought, than I was thinking, but I want to hear what everybody's got to say.
So... I think one sounds good. That makes sense. And on the duration side, I think whatever the max duration of the planning commissioner, whoever is the max duration, we should pick that one, that term, so that if anyone leaves within that max duration, we should be able to fill that gap or fill that space with this waitlist candidate.
Yeah, so, and I want to hear what you guys have to say, but also think of it this way. So let's say whoever we, we have a planning commissioner, say we pick somebody tonight. So that person's gonna be basically on a four-year term. But if they leave, then we would select somebody to, you know, fill the remainder of their term?
No.
Which could be three-plus years?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm saying is that, so we have staggered interviews every two years for planning commission. So let's say if there's a vacancy all of a sudden, someone's only six months into their term, right? Out of four years. But in a year and a half, we're gonna have interviews for those who are up for reappointment. We can then hold, include that vacancy and open it to the general public to reapply, including the person who was serving, they can reapply. Does that make sense?
Traditionally, we've done one year on the waitlist. Reason being, because you are going to have interviews again in two years.
Exactly.
So if you lose someone within the first year, you have a backup. But then if you lose someone between the first and the second year, you don't necessarily have someone to fill that timeframe. So it's up to the council to determine how they'd like to do it. But again, every, every other year, we interview for planning commission.
So I think that the next year, the next interview, before that interview, we should have this waiting list candidate as available. So if anyone leaves before that, that person should be able to fill in and can be until that, the first interviews that is coming.
The next round, exactly.
Okay. All right, Robert, you have a thought?
No, I wanted to concur with Councilmember Rubio. That was, what I was gonna suggest was just to make sure that we have some continuity until the next, until the next interview, round of interview. That's what I was gonna suggest. And one vacancy, one, not vacancy, one alternate would be good. Because my understanding, sorry, those alternates, they're not, they're not attending the meetings.
They could, but...
No, this is not alternate, sorry, this is a waitlist.
It's a waitlist.
It's a waitlist, okay.
Not alternate.
Okay, waitlist, okay.
Because in alternate, if someone is not there on that, if the, if someone is absent, then the alternate can participate in the meeting.
I see, okay, yeah.
Whereas in waiting list, the person cannot participate in.
Okay.
Right, they can't actively fill in for somebody until they actually have officially a position on the planning commission. However, they, of course, they are welcome to attend the meetings, yeah.
So Mayor, I have a question. So you suggested ninety days, I'm just curious...
I was throwing something out there.
Because, because what does happen if somebody leaves planning commission midway through? And let's say, let's say the vacant, let's say that alternate, sorry, the person waitlisted is given ninety days. And then what happens on the hundred and eightieth day, that commissioner decides to leave? What, do we have to go out and find another? I see, okay.
Yeah, I mean, or whether it's ninety days, six months, or whatever, or one year, as Joan said, we traditionally done it. Richard, what are your thoughts?
Well, I would go with the experience here on the council, because I haven't really been doing this very long, but shouldn't we have like two people on the waitlist in case we have a couple openings that come up unexpectedly? Is one enough, or should we have two? That would be able to fill in. I don't know how often this happens, so...
Well, it's happened with the planning commission. But we didn't have a waitlisted person. Four times?
No, but you, you have four applicants this evening. So that would be appointing...
Three out of the four.
Three of the four.
I think...
If you had two on a waitlist, you would be appointing three people this evening out of the four.
That we see tonight, yeah.
That would be...
Okay, I got it.
Also, it is not a must that we have to do it. We can always just say, okay, we want to, we don't even want to appoint anyone for any waiting list or even none today.
Right.
There's a possibility, right? So just let's keep that in mind.
I, and I think maybe if we're in agreement, one waitlist until the next round of regular meetings, filling that position vacancy, the waitlisted person filling that vacancy. And then, you know, based on the interviews today, for some reason, we don't feel like there's a good option for the waitlist seat. We can always, you know, wait for the next round of interviews to do that. But, but for now, I mean, to answer your question, Mayor, I'm thinking, I think a couple, a few of us, three of us, I think, have expressed a position on that, that we'd prefer.
Okay. Well, yeah. I, I think, you know, if somebody were to be selected now and then almost immediately quit, or maybe one of our other ones that quits, and, and then you still got almost two years to go before the next round of interviews, I think that's just, I mean, I... We would, we would go to the waitlist, but if we're, if we're well into the timeframe, I would, I'd say that we'd recast the net and go see what other candidates are out there, because a lot of things can change. Remember, this is a snapshot in time of people that applied. There may be others out there that are better qualified instead of somebody that we might waitlist tonight. And we wouldn't know that if we just stick with the waitlisted, you know, for the next two years. I guess what I'm saying is I'd be inclined to go with, you know, up to one year of waitlisted time and, you know, one person, sort of what I'm thinking.
I think it's all gonna pan out that way anyway, because it's unlikely that somebody's just going to quit within six months. So if they quit within a, in a year, and they serve one year, now you're talking back to the two year that we were talking about.
But another thing is if someone quits, if the waiting list person takes over, then anyway, we need to again cast the net and get someone for the waiting list also, right?
Not really, because the thing is, is that the... The...
We don't need to do that for the waiting list, but we, we can do this, again, the interviews and the expiration of the... Yeah, and the max, we are taking, instead of one year, we are saying, at the max, if tomorrow someone quits, then it will take two years. But given our experience, I don't, I don't, it's like...
It doesn't happen. So that's why I'm just saying, like, I don't think we have too much to worry about.
All right, so it sounds like most of you are in favor of one person and valid until the next time we have to do a planning commissioner selection. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay, if that's said, then would somebody give a motion on that?
I move a motion.
Okay, and now we'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Vice Mayor Veros, and second by Councilmember Rubio. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, motion passes. That's what we'll do. Joan, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so before we bring in the first candidate, just kind of make a couple comments here. So we've got the one person to select tonight and, and the one waitlisted person. As I said last time, this is a really important position. This is definitely not an advisory committee that we're picking here. This is not, this is not a training ground. This is not for someone's professional development. They need to be able to jump right into a lot of complex issues. So we need people that know our, our community, they know our city, our diverse community, what our vision is for the future. We've got two experienced commissioners right now, but we've got two really new commissioners. And so we have, have to take that in consideration, is to make sure we really get somebody that's gonna be strong. And, and keep in mind, you know, long-term continuity and things like that with all the, the complex issues that are coming up over the next, you know, six months to a year. So I'm thinking experience and really that readiness to hit the ground running are things that we really need to strongly consider. And, you know, like last time, there's a whole lot of different factors to keep in mind. It's, we've got their application, we're gonna see them in the interview tonight. We've, we'll learn, we've learned about their relative work and experiences, find out about their understanding of the city and how well they, how well they know our community, our challenges and things like that. We'll get their education and training and, and just, there's a whole lot of factors. You all will have an opportunity to kind of talk about what you are looking for specifically when we get to the deliberation part. But let's keep in mind all these factors as we go through the interview process and make our decision. So any, any questions before we get going? Anybody want to start with any opening comments about what you're looking for? Or you hold that till the end of what you looked for? Anything? No, okay. All right, ready for the first candidate?
Yes.
All right, let's bring in the first candidate, please.
What's the order, Mayor?
Let's, who's got two?
No, no, no.
Who's got two questions? I've got two, you've got two? Okay, so we'll go, you, we'll go you, me, and then we'll kind of go Richard.
Me, Robert, Robert.
Robert, Richard, then you. So let me write that down, because I'm gonna get confused.
We've had long meetings this week. Completely understand.
Marisol, Mark, Robert, Richard, then... Sure. Okay.
And then, again.
And then again, for Marisol and me.
Oh, you want to do it that way? We split our questions? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to write down that? You want to write down also that one, otherwise?
Oh, repeat?
Yeah.
Times two, just say times two.
Yeah, Marisol, then me, okay.
Yeah. Very good.
All right, and you got the timers and you remember how to work all that?
Correct.
And also...
Are we giving any thirty seconds?
Warning?
Warning?
I think we can ask the respondent, the interviewee, if, would you like a thirty-second one?
Sure.
Yeah, there we go.
So let's, we'll give, we'll give thirty seconds.
Like this?
Okay.
I'll like this. Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. Yeah, so we don't interrupt them, that's a good idea. Okay.
So, good evening, and you are Abhijit?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
It was a hard J or a soft J? Abhijit or Jit?
No, it's, I think the soft J is fine.
Abhijit, okay. All right, well, welcome and thank you for, for coming in this evening and expressing your interest. This is how it's gonna work tonight. We're gonna give you a two-minute opening statement opportunity. And then we're gonna go into questions. And it'll start off with Councilmember Rubio, then myself, and then we'll go with Councilmember Dwayneat, Councilmember Adler, and Vice Mayor Veros. And then we'll go, Councilmember Rubio, one more time, and me one more time.
Okay.
At the end, okay? So that'll be a total of, whatever that is, seven questions?
Seven questions.
Okay, it'll be seven questions. You'll have two minutes for each, up to two minutes. You don't have to take all two minutes. And then we'll have a timer, so we're gonna each individually kind of start the timer. We'll give you that thirty-second warning when you're, if you're getting close. And then at the end of all the questions, we'll give you the opportunity for up to a two-minute closing statement as well for anything else you want to say.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, we ready to go? Okay, floor is yours, we'll start with two minutes.
Definitely. Thank you, Mayor Armstrong, Vice Mayor, Mr. Veros, Councilmember Rubio, Councilmember Dwayneat, and Councilmember Adler. I, my name is Abhijit Banerji, and I'm really thank you, thanking you from the bottom of my heart to consider me for the position of the planning commission. And I'm really excited about it to serve the planning commission and answer your questions. Just a brief history about, so my connection with San Ramon started way back in the late nineteen nineties. I used to live in South Bay, and I used to commute thirty-three miles one way to the Pacific Bell headquarters out here in Bishop Ranch. And I was totally impressed by, even at that time, by the forward thinking and planning, where it was a blend of both corporate jobs and, and opportunity, as well as the small-town feel. That impression never left me. I always wanted to move to San Ramon, and I ever, always, even though I've lived in many cities, I always compared each of those cities to San Ramon. Finally, in two thousand and nineteen, I made San Ramon my home, and it's been six years now since I moved to San Ramon. And I've always been an avid advocate and involved in the community since moving here. I jumped on the opportunity to do the Police Academy, the Planning Academy, and the Government 101, all three of them, and it was really a very enlightening opportunity and got me even more excited to be more involved in the community.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
I'm also the HOA president and an Architecture Review Board member, and I have the experience as a product leader and engineering, where I cherish and bring in the skills of problem-solving, database decisions, detail-oriented, and stakeholder alignment. And I think I can bring those skills into this planning commission and really help to make reasonable advisor role to the city council, being on the planning commission and working with the city staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go with the first question, and that'll be with Councilmember Rubio.
Hello, Abhijit, Abhijit?
Yes, correct.
I said it correctly. Thank you for applying and for joining us this evening. My question is, with five thousand one hundred and eleven units needed to be built by two thousand and thirty-one, according to RENA here in San Ramon, and thirty-one twenty-six being moderate, low-income, very-low income, how would you propose we achieve this goal in a timely, responsible manner? Would it be the same or different than what we've been doing? And how would you make that possible, considering cost and time limitations, as well as current state policies? Please try to be specific as much as you can.
Definitely, thank you, Councilmember Rubio, for the question. It's, it's a great question. I think it's the, it's on the top of the mind of all the planning commissions across the state with RENA numbers in there. As of two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty-one, I believe San Ramon has the, has delivered or met the target about fourteen hundred, less than fifteen hundred of those five thousand one hundred and eleven of those homes and the less affordable housing. So we are currently about sixty-one percent of the target is, is what I have seen from the, from the statistics. What, but based on the previous data, we were a little ahead of our previous targets, are meeting just about at a hundred percent. So I believe what San Ramon is doing, we just have to amplify those efforts. The opportunities have definitely come up over here, like a lot of the projects underway, especially rezoning Bishop Ranch for mixed use. The Archers, the Eden project, Riverwalk is a great example of it. I believe that the project like Eden, which was just approved last week, is a very exciting and encouraging decision that helps us meet those goals. The Bishop Ranch is uniquely located, it is in the transit corridor X two six eighty. And so...
Thirty seconds.
I let him know instantly.
I, I believe that, you know, we have, with those mixed use, zoning, zoning in place and avail those land by rezoning it and encouraging high-density housing around it, we should be able to meet those numbers. We just have to amplify it, we cannot just stay like that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And so I've got the next question. And how would you describe San Ramon to a first-time visitor, and where would you take them?
I would describe San Ramon as a vibrant, small-big town. Or big-small town, you know? Where it is very diverse, very well-planned, and has great opportunities for housing, as well as active, different lifestyle and multi-generational community. Where I would take them, the first thing, I would take them to all the open places and the parks. You know, and then show them around the great infrastructure, around the schools. So, and the, and the local businesses that are out there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next question will be Councilmember Dwayneat.
Abhijit, thank you so much, and I appreciate your time. So my question is, when you think about the role of a planning commissioner, what do you think people misunderstand the most?
I'm just gonna take a guess. That's a great question. I, I, I believe, I firmly believe that, and having gone through the, the Planning Academy, the planning commission's role is an advisory role. They can make decisions, but not always. They can have inputs from the public to understand if there is, to get the sense of the public sentiment about, you know, if they're off and work with the city staff and planning department and, and come to a consensus while also safeguarding the legal jurisdiction and the state mandates like RENA and all the other SB three thirty, ten, nine, and other Senate housing bills that have been passed. Ultimately, so for, for bigger initiatives that challenge, that requires rethinking for zone change and others, there would be an active debate. Ultimately, the council, the city council, is the ultimate approving authority, and the planning commission is working in the guidance of the general plan, which is the blueprint or the constitution for the planning commission, and recommending their decisions to the city council.
Thank you, you have a minute left, but my question was related to what do you think people misunderstand the most? Not, not, not what the role is.
I feel that people might misunderstand that the planning commission makes all the decisions and, and, and they don't understand how the planning commission makes, how the planning commission makes the decision. What factors do they, do they play in in terms of decision-making? And that's, it's not transparent enough for the general people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Adler.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Abhijit, and stepping up. You've touched on a couple issues already, but as you know, the planning commission is currently working on several other important issues. Please provide us with a few examples of these key issues, and why do you think they are so important?
So the key issues that I have already highlighted or in the questions, can you just be specific? Sorry, I could not understand your question.
Well, what, what other issues besides what you've, you've already touched on, do you think are on the plate of the planning commission right now that they're having to deal with? Looking forward, other key, key issues?
Well, the, the biggest one right now, I believe, is the redevelopment of the Bishop Ranch. With the Chevron headquarters getting repurposed, multi-zone constructions or permitting that is going on, I think that is the biggest one right now for planning commission. Other than that, there are like other spots of parcels or of area that have been, that the developers are asking to be rezoned and the planning commission being, to be looking at, you know, how does that support the affordable housing, the mandates by the state creating more housing and affordable housing in particular as well? The other thing is also pre-planning infrastructure. So any of these projects, how is it gonna strain the infrastructure? When you're putting, you know, four hundred houses on the Eden project, that's, you know, four hundred more cars at least on the road. So sewer, schools, utilities, other things. So that is also a purview of the planning commission to be, to be mindful of, like, how is that sustainable and how is it future-proofing and planning for it? And then keeping the general plan updated, so there is currently a twenty-four forty general plan out there in Plan San Ramon. It needs to be updated every five to eight years, that's by the state mandate. And so how is the, the, the demand and the asks that are coming in for the planning commission? What would be the input to the general plan update when we make next?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, let's go to Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Abhijit. Thank you for applying for this position. My question for you, please share why you are interested in serving on the planning commission. In your response, include your understanding of commission's legal role, as well as your knowledge of its financial conflict of interest, rules, and ethical responsibilities.
Yeah. Planning commission is a, it's a very, very great question. Thank you, Mr. Veros. The, planning commission, definitely any, any member of the planning commission has to be very, very ethical, because... be very, very ethical because they have to keep the public interest and the city's interest and the state's interest all together before. And there should not be any conflict of interest. If there is, let's say, for example, if there is an application where the friend or close associate of a planning committee member is there, it should be, you know, called out to the city attorney expressing that this might be a conflict of interest and making sure that the planning commission member refrains from participating in those discussions, making general comments, and even recusing themselves to vote. Because this, one of the main role of a planning commission member is public transparency, the making sure that the, each commissioner operates in a, in the most ethical and with integrity to make sure that everything is safeguarded. I'm not sure if that was the answer that you were looking for in answering your question or not.
You answered my question.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, we're gonna go for the second round of questions for Councilmember Rubio and myself.
Okay. Thank you. We often focus on the logistical aspects of land use and development and may overlook the human factor. What kind of services and resources would you propose we bring forward to ensure that new, non-traditional community members feel welcome and thrive in San Ramon? How would you make this come to fruition?
Great question. I think--
Mr. Rishabh, formal moments?
What? Sorry. I think the question that was asked by Councilmember Juwena touched upon a little bit like in that area where public input is very vital, and that's one of the very important function of the planning commission. You could have the state mandate, you could have the general plan, you could have the bylaws and the ordinances in place, but those are more factual and, but they may not be in line with the public sentiment. Public sentiment, it's very important to understand the public sentiment by having, you know, hearing, keep making it transparent and making sure that the commissioner, each one of them, is actively listening about what exactly is the concern. Is that a physical attribute? Is that a social attribute? Is a cultural attribute and everything? And that needs to be taken into account when a planning commission member or the planning commission is making that decision. They may factor in and go in that favor, they may not, but at least the people, the citizens of the city have the right to be heard and to know why a decision was made in a particular way.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And so this will be the last question. Went pretty quick. All right, here we go. When you think about San Ramon's neighborhoods and commercial areas, what stands out to you as the city's biggest strengths and weaknesses and challenges, I should say?
Mayor Armstrong, are you referring to mostly the commercial part or any--
Our neighborhoods and commercial retail areas.
Okay.
Just what are our biggest strengths and what are our challenges?
I believe we, I mean, this is me noticing as a citizen, is that we have density of housing which are mostly zone residential. If you go into the Hoary Valley area, there's hardly any commercial or mixed use out there. Whereas if you go on the west side of San Ramon, it's mostly commercial, the old San Ramon is very commercial. So it feels like there is a very heterogeneous division by the freeway where you have to go. The bridge point is the city center, and that has been a really melting pot that brought a lot of people together, the citizens together, both from the east and the west. So I think it was very evident because I also attended the government 101 and how our sister cities of San Ramon, which is Dublin, Livermore, Pleasanton, had way more commercial establishment as compared to San Ramon and because of which our sales tax revenue were much less as compared to our sister cities. And so I believe there is an opportunity to increase the commercial footprint so that the city of San Ramon, the citizens of San Ramon don't have to venture out to the other areas and they can shop here in their own city and support their city. Those would be my observations for about the city.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Well, those are all the questions that we have. So at this time, we'll give you a chance to provide a closing statement and go ahead.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council and for your time and thoughtful decisions, discussions. Those were really great questions and I really enjoyed it. As I said earlier, I'm really and deeply passionate about the future of San Ramon, having had a connection with San Ramon for over 27, 28 years now. My journey here from a visitor in the 90s to a dedicated resident and community volunteer today has given me unique perspective of the city's incredible growth, its challenges, and its enduring small-town character. And I believe that I have the combination of the professional skills and the community experience to bring in with a strong sense of civic duty to serve as an effective planning commissioner. City of San Ramon's general plan, I've been following it ever since I moved to San Ramon and got more into it, exposure to it when I attended the Planning Academy. And I can really see the power of the general plan and how it's shaping the future of this city as the blueprint. My goal is to have San Ramon community supervision be sustainable with socio-economically inclusive and a multi-generational city. And thanks for your time and consideration, and I hope I get the opportunity to serve the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, that's all we have for you this evening. So we will make our decision tonight and we'll get notification out to everyone what the answer is. It'll be through the city clerk's office. But we want to, again, thank you for coming in. Thank you for applying for the position. It's a very important one, and we certainly value the fact that you expressed interest and your desire to serve on this commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, city council.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I was working the timer a little bit here. Some challenges with the timer, but kind of look at your neighbor to the left and the right, and if they don't have a timer, go on.
You were within--
We were within our timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we have 6:40 coming in, Max Zhang.
Yeah. I mean, we started five minutes late, so--
Yeah, okay.
Technically, yes.
All right. Good evening, Max.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, of course.
All right. So here's how it's gonna go tonight. We've got a whole, generally 25 minutes for the whole process here, so it's not gonna take too long.
Okay.
And we'll give you the opportunity to do a two-minute opening statement, up to two minutes, and then we're gonna have seven questions. And we'll give you two minutes for each of those questions. We have a timer up here, and we're gonna kind of give you a 30-second warning when you're getting close to that, the end of that two minutes. And then at the very end, we'll give you the opportunity to do a two-minute close as well. And the order of the questions, we're gonna start off with Councilmember Rubio, then myself, and then it'll be over to Councilmembers Juwena, Councilmember Adler, Councilmember Veros, and then Councilmember Rubio and I will have one final question at the end. So we'll have two total.
Okay. Great.
All right. And just as a reminder, this evening's session is being recorded, but again, thank you for coming in and--
You got it.
At your, you can go ahead and begin with any opening statement you want to make.
Okay. Perfect. So, hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. For the folks watching at home, my name is Max Zhang. I live in Doorty Valley, specifically Windermere Ranch. My family and I, we moved to San Ramon back in 2007. At the time, I was just starting first grade, I believe. Since then, besides a few years, you know, during and after college, I've really called San Ramon my home that whole time. A little bit about my experience and why I'm even applying for the planning commission. First, after graduating college, I spent most of that time working as a researcher and data analyst for a nonprofit located in the North Bay, Santa Rosa. We do affordable housing advocacy work, trying to make housing in the Bay more affordable, promote the construction of more housing. In that job, I've learned a lot, so much, about housing and planning and local government. And I've had the privilege to present my research findings to elected officials, staff, developers, directors of local nonprofits, journalists, and also get the opportunity to work closely with staff on local housing policy reform and housing research. Personally, I have a really strong passion for urban planning. In my free time, I love to read books about urban planning theory and practice. Whenever I'm traveling and visiting other cities, I love to just explore and observe, study streets and neighborhoods, and apply what I've learned from my work and what I study to these real-life places. I really believe planning is critical to addressing some of our most pressing local, regional, and statewide issues, you know, housing affordability, transportation, the health of our local economy, and the fiscal health of local governments, even climate change.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't give you your warning, but--
No, that's okay.
Your time has expired.
So all those reasons are why I get involved in San Ramon, why I show up to city council, and why I'm applying for the planning commission, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Max. All right. We're gonna start the first question with Councilmember Rubio.
You got it.
Good evening, Max. Thank you for applying--
Of course.
--and being here tonight to join us. My question to you is with 5,111 units needing to be built in San Ramon and 31, 3,126 being moderate low income, very low income, how would you propose we achieve this goal in a timely, responsible manner? Would it be the same or different than what we've been doing? And how would you make that possible considering cost and time limitations as well as current state policies?
That is an excellent question. Hopefully, I'll get to all of your parts. So from what I understand of our RENA targets, I think San Ramon as a city is, may not be keeping pace. I know we have a lot of units in the pipeline. We've got orchards, we've got everything in CityWalk, BR-7, BR-11, Eden, all of that should be coming online relatively soon. But, you know, San Ramon, like almost every other city in California, has been struggling to meet its housing goals, its state mandated housing goals. And I think that necessitates some kind of rethinking or just reevaluation of what our policies are because it is undoubtable from the research, I know this personally from my work, that local governments have a big role to play in affecting how much housing gets built because, you know, it's local control. Land use decisions are made at the local level. So if there are things we can do to make it, of course, faster to get units built, if we can make it more financially feasible by changing development standards, by being more, changing our land use patterns, making it more predictable for developers to get things done, take advantage of whatever, you know, state tax credits or grants that are useful for getting especially affordable units built, everything we can take advantage, we really need to consider it because otherwise, you know, the penalties for not keeping up with RENA are pretty severe, as we know.
You have 30 seconds left. That was somebody else's--
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, with some recent state legislation such as, was it SB 35? You know, if we don't keep pace with RENA, I believe, starting next year, then San Ramon, you know, we're gonna lose a lot of control over what we develop. So it's really crucial to take a bigger-picture approach, consider some out-of-the-box solutions, learn from other places in California, other places in the country, even in North America, like how we can do better on housing.
Now, that's your real timer.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here's my first question. And how would you describe San Ramon to a first-time visitor and where would you take them?
That's a really good question. Let's see. I'll try to be nice. When I was a kid, you know, you have a lot of strong feelings about growing up in a place like this. As an adult, I've become a lot more appreciative of all the nice things we have here. San Ramon is definitely safe, right? I think that's something we pride ourselves on, and we need to maintain that because lots of people who live here come from cities that aren't safe, and there's a reason why they appreciate that safety so much. San Ramon at one point, you know, used to be more affordable for people who are looking to get out of, you know, like the more core Bay Area and find a place to raise a family, send their kids to a good school. It's not so affordable these days. San Ramon's very car-dependent, and I know we're doing a lot to try and improve that, but that's not easy. Much of California, much of the state, is car-dependent, so that's something we need to work on. Where would I take them? You know, people really love city center. As a local, sometimes I find it confusing. I think people out of the city like it more than, you know, kids like me who grew up here, but I don't judge. There's a lot to see in city center. It's a beautiful building. We have so many beautiful parks and open space. I think, even though it's a little bit outside of the city, take them up to Los Trampas, beautiful place to visit, right? I actually had the opportunity to bring a colleague to San Ramon, and I showed him around the neighborhood. He's from New York, hasn't spent much time in a suburb like San Ramon before, so getting to show like what suburban living looks like. And San Ramon, one thing we can be proud of is that I think we've done a really good job when it comes to this suburban living because our neighborhoods are well-designed. We have great sidewalks and landscaping. Our roads are well-maintained. We have nice houses. If you are a family looking for a place to live, a good school district to send your kids to, San Ramon is a good place, and we should be proud of that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're gonna move over to Councilmember Juwena.
Hey, Max. Good evening, and thank you for attending. So my question is, when you think about the role of a planning commissioner, what do you believe people misunderstand the most?
Understand. Great question. I think, I would assume people think that planning commissioners have a magic wand and that, you know, everything can be, if we just wanted to, we could make all the decisions we want. There are a lot of constraints for cities, for planners and planning commission. You know, we're all trying to, it's a very delicate balancing act, the way that we do land use in this state and at the local level. So I think they think that if they just show up to a planning commission meeting and express their concerns, however valid those concerns may be, they think that change is gonna happen just at the snap of their fingers, which it doesn't. These projects, whatever outcome you see, that's the result of many, many hours of an applicant putting something together, staff reviewing the materials, deeming if the application is complete or not, and then finally goes to the planning commission and then a few more hours of deliberation. You know, you'll have a study session before you get to the actual hearing or, you know, a couple of public hearings. So they, I think they assume that the process is simpler than it really is, and it's not because we have a system that is meant to take in the considerations of many, many different stakeholders. It's not-- It's not just the applicant, it's not just residents, it's not just staff, or the Commission, or City Council. Everyone really gets a say, it can be a cumbersome process, and, you know, that can be frustrating, but it's something that we in California, that we in this country really value, and the question is not like, do we want to throw that all away, but how can we make the Planning Commission, you know, get more done without giving up the things that we care about, without giving up people's voices and the ability for people to express their different opinions and values.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, now we're going to go down to Councilmember Adler.
Thanks for being here, Max, appreciate it very much. My question for you is, the Planning Commission is currently working on several important issues, please provide us with a few examples of these key issues, and why do you feel they are so important?
It's a good question. I don't want to call the orchards an issue, per se, but since it's going to be probably one of the biggest development projects we'll see in San Ramon, I guess the biggest since Dordi Valley, right? That is something that the Planning Commission has to spend a lot of time, making sure that we get this project right. Sunset has a strong vision for what they want, the orchards, and really all of Bishop Ranch to look like, and that's their prerogative, they're the landowner, but it's up to us in the city, and it's up to the Planning Commission to make sure that whatever does get developed is fair to Sunset, fair to the applicant, but also serves the residents, serves the needs of the city. So I'd say, projects like that, and all the other projects associated with CityWalk, DMU North, you know, all these developments that are coming down the pipeline, our Plan Commission has to keep abreast of that. Other issues, I mean, we don't know what we're going to see next from the Senate and the Assembly, but they're going to send us something, and keeping abreast of those state laws is a big issue, and being able to support staff as they figure things out, and be able to communicate to residents who obviously are not keeping close tabs on what is going on, and the legislature, but being able to communicate and educate residents, so we know when, you know, we have these RENA goals, we have these new state mandates, letting people know what we can and cannot do in the Planning Commission, what San Ramon's responsibilities to the region, to the state are, but still what we can do to advocate for our residents, protect our residents' interests, serve our community. It's a really difficult balancing act, and you just have to be very well-informed about what's going on in order to pull that off successfully, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, now Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Max. Thank you for applying for this position.
Of course.
My question for you, please share why you are interested in serving on the Planning Commission. In your response, include your understanding of Commission's legal role, as well as your knowledge of its financial conflict of interest, rules, and ethical responsibilities.
Okay, interesting. Why I'm interested in applying for the Planning Commission, I guess I mentioned it a bit in my opening statement, but first of all, I have a really strong passion for planning, I think I got it from my parents. I really find this work interesting and meaningful, there's a reason why I keep showing up to City Council meetings and Plan Commission meetings. I also feel like it's important for, knowing that, you know, we had difficulties filling vacancies on the Commission, and knowing that someone like me might be qualified to serve the city, I felt like I had some responsibility to step up, right? So I wanted to, in some way, in whatever fashion I can, give back to my hometown. As for, you said, the legal, and the financial, and the ethical, all these considerations with the Planning Commission, let's see, financial, well, you know, Planning Commission makes decisions about individual projects, and of course, there's a conflict of interest, because you don't want a Commissioner to make a decision that's biased, that's based on, they'll gain something, some monetary reward from whatever decision they make, that's why we fill out an FPPC form, right? Legal, the legal responsibility of the Planning Commission, well, you know, it's in the government code, it's in our, I believe it's in the charter or in the municipal code somewhere, you know, we are the authority appointed by the City Council in order to handle land-use decisions, to carry out the general plan, any specific plans, to make updates as necessary, right, to do all the land-use stuff that you guys don't have time for, right? Because San Ramon's a big city, and there's a lot of projects to keep in consideration. And then finally, ethical considerations. I mean, a Planning Commissioner, like anyone in government, serves every single citizen, and we have to be fair to our citizens, we have to be fair to the applicants who are, you know, who own land and they have certain rights and privileges, we have to be fair to future residents who have a right to live in San Ramon, and says like ours, just like anyone else, so there's all these considerations. You have to balance the interests of so many people, not give undue priority to one group or over another. You have to consider the interests of existing residents, people who've lived here, called San Ramon home for years, for decades, you have to value the interests of people who own the parcels of land in the city, you have to value the interests of people in the region, in California, or even, you know, wherever they're coming from, who want to come to San Ramon and make it their home. I'd say that's how I view the ethical side of things.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, we've got two more to go, it'll be Councilmember Rubio and myself, go ahead.
Okay, my last question to you, Max, is, we often focus on the logistical aspects of land use and development, and may overlook the human factor. What kind of services and resources would you propose we bring forward to ensure that new, non-traditional community members feel welcome and thrive in San Ramon? How would you make that come to fruition?
New and non-traditional members, that's an interesting question. I think, just going back to the basics of planning, why do we do planning, right? It's because, first, planning is really crucial to the economic health of a city. Why do cities exist, you know? They exist because people need a place to live, people need a place to work, people need a place to buy groceries, go to the doctor, visit a park, right? So, just ensuring excellence in the planning work that we do, making sure that we achieve metrics like safety, affordability, accessibility, right? Those are the core functions of planning, and I think those are the things that we have to keep in mind whenever we're poring through, you know, pages and pages of documents and making these decisions. We're trying to give the people who live in the city, present and future, opportunities and just a good place to live. Now, there was a second part to your question that I feel like I missed.
Sure, I'm happy to repeat that. It was, it was just, how would you make that come to fruition? So say, you propose, these are services and resources we should have in place, we have a lot of affordable housing coming in to play, different demographics, how do we meet their needs?
That's a great question. I mean, since I spend my, all my time doing data analysis, that's where I would start, right? There's plenty of data out there, we know lots of information about the people who live in, like, these affordable projects like you mentioned, we know what kind of needs are being met. I believe in my own research, you know, this affordable housing, I think some of the biggest benefits it provides is it's an anti-displacement measure. It prevents people who've lived here in the region for a long time from being displaced, being forced to, I don't know, go to the Central Valley, leave the state altogether. It doesn't necessarily ease their day-to-day cost burden as much as we hope it does, it can reduce their stress, their day-to-day stress, but, you know, it's not a panacea, right? So, I think it's important that whatever planning decisions we make, you know, we have to support those core functions, like, okay, can we implement policies that make it easy for people to find jobs, start businesses, find a place to live, so they can take care of themselves.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and so, Max, here's the last question for the evening. When you think about San Ramon's neighborhoods and commercial areas, what stands out to you as the city's biggest strengths and challenges?
Great question. Biggest strengths, we have this giant piece of land in the middle of the city called Bishop Ranch, which, you know, is mostly owned by Sunset, and there's a lot of potential there, right? You can have, we already have some master plans, but you can really do an excellent job of creating a wonderful, vibrant, walkable, lively, mixed-use city core, mixed-use downtown, which we've been trying our best to achieve. That is something that not every city has, you know, we have older cities like, let's say Pleasanton, Livermore, Danville, which don't have giant pieces of land in the middle of their city, where we can sort of have a bit of a blank canvas and think, what is the best thing we could do with this piece of land? How can we really make San Ramon a standout, excellent city that learns from the lessons of the past, learns from cities across the country and across the world that we know are excellent, but we do it better, based on what we've learned? Its weaknesses, a lot of the rest of San Ramon is, you know, single-family suburban sprawl, like much of the state, much of the country, it's a kind of pretty inflexible land use, and you've got these winding cul-de-sacs, you know, the neighborhoods are a little disconnected, especially if you're trying to go via car, and we don't have as much opportunity to reuse land and adapt uses as things change, because cities are constantly changing, right? And we can't expect that a neighborhood that we imagined would be one-way 50 years ago is going to stay like that today, or 50 years into the future. So, we have a lot of neighborhoods which can, in ways that are, you know, really sympathetic to existing residents, that can be adapted for the future, and that can serve existing residents and future residents, but it's, you know, we have a, we have a difficult land-use form, we have a, we have this winding road network, and this, and our single-family subdivisions, and it's not an easy task to update, or renovate, or reimagine San Ramon to be a city that meets the challenges of today and will meet the challenges of the future.
Okay, all right, thank you, Max, for that. All right, so that was it for our questions, we're going to give you a chance to do up to two minutes for a closing statement as well, you can cover whatever you want, maybe you wanted to say something, but it didn't come out in the questions, or whatever you feel like saying at this point.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, I mean, first, I want to say thank you all for the great questions, they're tough, definitely got me thinking, and thank you all for the work that you guys do for San Ramon, it is, I know, an often thankless job, and it's not easy, so I just want to be one voice, at least, that is saying thank you for the service that you do. Some things I didn't get to mention, I touched on it a little bit, like I said, I have a data analysis and research background, it's the thing that I just somehow ended up being pretty good at. I have a lot of ideas for how we can use, you know, data and modern data analysis tools to help make better planning decisions, because planning affects so many aspects of San Ramon, especially affects aspects like, you know, the city's fiscal and economic health. We had to, we just barely closed a huge budget deficit this year with Measure N, and we've got, let's say, a few, you know, up to 10 years of breathing room to figure out how we're going to close that deficit long-term, and I think planning is going to play a huge part in that, and I'd love to contribute in that fashion, to do that kind of analysis. I also want to say, you guys probably saw it in my planning application, like I said, I've read a lot of planning books, I feel like I have a good amount of knowledge of planning theory and practice, and also knowledge about urban economics. Once again, I'd really just love the chance to apply that knowledge to a real place, to a real city, my city, my hometown, thank you. So, that's the unique contribution I feel like I can make as a Planning Commissioner. But, yeah, besides that, you know, regardless of the decision that you all make today, I just want to say, I found a lot of enjoyment attending city meetings, really getting involved with what's going on in San Ramon this year, learning so much about how local government works, having the great pleasure to talk with and meet so many wonderful people who care deeply about the city. So, you can expect me to keep showing up in City Hall one way or another, so, thank you all, and have a great evening.
Okay, thanks. Max, before you go, just, again, thank you on behalf of all of us, thanks for coming in and showing an interest in this position, and just being active and participating in our Planning Commission meetings, our City Council meetings, we do appreciate that. We will make a decision tonight, we'll get the word out to you, and I don't know if you've got this book, but if you don't have this book, you can grab this, and I'll get it back from you sometime, I know you're always showing up to meetings.
I think it's my reading list, as we speak.
This is one of the ICMA books, you said you read one, but it had a little different title, maybe you've got that one or not.
Thank you, I mean, regardless if I'm Commissioner, I'm going to enjoy reading this.
All right, I'll get it back from you.
And thank you to mom and dad for coming as well, and by the way, go Bears!
Go Bears!
All right, next, we're running a couple minutes behind.
Robert had to step away.
Oh, okay, all right, so we're going to
We got to wait for him.
Take a short break, and then we'll bring in, the next candidate is Don Yuculis.
Okay.
So, just take a break for a moment. All right, hi, Don, good to see you again.
Good to see you guys.
All right, so here's how it's going to work, similar to the way we've done things in the past, we're going to allow you the opportunity to give an opening statement, up to two minutes, and then we're going to have a total of seven questions, and we'll have two minutes per question also. We all have timers, we'll kind of use those timers, we'll give you like a 30-second warning, and then at the end, we'll give you a chance to give a two-minute close as well.
Sounds great.
Okay, and so it should be no more than 25 minutes total elapsed time, but I'm sure we'll probably stay within that. So, why don't we go ahead and get going, just a reminder, this is being recorded, and, but you can go ahead and begin with a two-minute opening.
Sure.
Sure.
Up to two minutes.
Thanks for, thanks for having me back again. Appreciate that, and thanks for the work you do for the city. A little bit about myself, I'm recently retired, exactly almost a year, so very interested in getting involved locally. I've been a resident of San Ramon since 2005, so I've seen quite a bit of growth over the years, and want to get involved to ensure that growth continues in a positive way. Our, our son loves the area, so he wants to remain in the area at some point, so trying to look with that lens in mind going forward. So, from that standpoint, that's why I want to be involved, is I've been here a long time. I want to see it go forward in a positive manner with the, with the growth that I've seen. A little bit of background in terms of work that I've done in the past, previously I've been in consulting, so process improvement, reengineering work through Arthur Andersen in the past, also worked mergers and acquisitions on the integration side, so integrating the operations of companies that we acquired, companies I've been at, and Cisco, SAP, Nokia, Visa. So, as a part of that role, I'm involved with integrating all aspects of the operation, so from HR to finance to product, customer support, real estate and finance, risk, compliance. And so, I've spent a lot of time learning, you know, from a real estate and development standpoint, what requirements are necessary from a city as things are developed, especially from a commercial standpoint. So, I've got some experience on that side, which I think would lend itself here as well. And so, been very involved in influencing decision-makers, also in engaging with them and collaborating. That's been a key part of my role, collaborating from the C-suite down to individual contributors. So, I think that experience, plus the amount of time that I spend in San Ramon, and seeing it evolve, I, I think makes me a good candidate for the role, and I think I can add a lot of value.
Okay, super. Thank you. We're going to go ahead with the first round of questions, and the order's going to be, it'll start off with Councilmember Rubio, then me, and down to Councilmembers Wayne At, Councilmember Adler, Vice Mayor Veros, and then Councilmember Rubio has a second question, I've got a second question.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so let's start off with Councilmember Rubio.
Okay, great. Don, thank you so much for applying and joining us this evening. My question, first question to you is, five thousand one hundred and eleven units are needing to be built in San Ramon, and of those, three thousand one hundred and twenty-six units are supposed to be moderate-low-income, very-low-income. How would you propose we achieve this goal in a timely, responsible manner? Would it be the same or different than what we've been doing, and how would you make that possible considering cost and time limitations, as well as current state policies?
So, I think, from what I understand, those have to be developed by 2031, and from what I understand, there's quite a number of projects, roughly sixteen, that are ongoing currently to try and meet that need. So, I think as far as what's occurring, it's, it's the right engagement in terms of, obviously you need a multitude of projects in play at any one time in order to hit those numbers. At the same time, I think there's a lot of work to be done to ensure that those are the right types of buildings that are being done for the city in terms of its growth and compatibility with the city look and feel. So, I, I think you need to have that balance of having plenty of projects in the pipeline to hit that goal. At the same time, I think you've got to manage and understand the impacts from a traffic standpoint, a safety standpoint, and what the impact will be from a overall parking standpoint as well, and engagement with the community in terms of the level of construction, the disruption, et cetera. So, I think it's, it's the right approach, because you've got to make, meet the state mandates, and you can be fined if you aren't making those mandates. So, I think the city's putting its best foot forward in terms of reviewing the developers' plans, getting those in motion moving forward. I think the one thing that it's got to be balanced is making sure that the Planning Commission is pressing the developers on, you know, issues like affordable housing, making sure that those are hitting the numbers that we need as a community and the state, and ensuring that they're engaging with the community not only from a social standpoint, but from a monetary standpoint, that they are contributing back to the community in terms of potential parks, or facilitating growth of small and medium-sized businesses in the community, as well as potentially, how can they contribute to the schools and the growth and development of the, the students here that are contributing to San Ramon and their families?
Time, sorry. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Don, here's my first question for you. How would you describe San Ramon to a first-time visitor, and where would you take them?
Interesting question. I would say it's a vibrant community, very safe, one that people are out all the time and engaging with one another. I, I see people on walks all the time, on the, on the bike paths, et cetera. So, I think it's very engaging. I would say it's actually very well taken care of, and it, it's a, a city that's in constant movement and development, so it's, it's a very positive place. It's a very family-friendly place, and I think one of the first places that I take them to is probably City Hall, because I think this building is a great representation of the growth that the, that the city's seen in terms of it being expanded and being one of the newer buildings in the city. So, it's a great focal point for the city, and then from there, branching out in the different parts of the community to show them how people engage, whether it may be sports, or the, the number of small businesses we have at the lot now that's growing, and how people are able to navigate the city fairly easily. So, I think I would bring someone here to see, see those aspects of the city and, and engage them, and, and, you know, showcase the city, if you will.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, we're going to go over to Councilmember Wayne At.
Hey, Don. Good evening. Thanks for being here. So, my question is, when you think about the role of a planning commissioner, what do you believe people misunderstand the most?
I think a lot of people don't understand the complexity of the role and the nuances in terms of, I didn't realize until, until I started doing a lot of research, I think people believe the, the Planning Commission has right to approve and deny any project that comes along, which in many cases isn't the case. There's state mandates that the city has to meet, and understanding that developers, if they're within state guidelines, the city has to accept those plans. And I think a lot of people don't understand that, and that in, in many ways, the Planning Commission is ensuring that we're meeting the state's requirements, but at the same time, they've got a delicate balance in terms of how they manage with the developers, how that any one development is brought into the community, look, feel, aesthetic, security, traffic, these aspects of it. And I think that's where the Planning Commission does a lot of great work in terms of working with the developers and pushing back, but I think for the, the general community, they believe that everything's in the control of the Planning Commission, and that's not the case. A lot of it is dictated by the city in terms of goals that we have to meet, and numbers that we have to meet that are quite large, and the state requirements in terms of accepting developers' plans if they meet the state guidelines. And so, I think that's where I think the Planning Commission can really do a good job through social media and through outreach to better educate the community to understand, because a lot of people want to, you know, nitpick in terms of, well, this shouldn't happen, or this development is too much, or this one doesn't look right, but I don't think the, the general population understands the intricacies and the nuances between what the city, Planning Commission, City Council are doing in concert with the state laws and requirements. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go down to this end with Councilmember Adler.
And, hi, Don, and thanks for, for being back and, and your, your care and concern about our city. My question is, the plant, the San Ramon Planning Commission is currently working on several important issues. Please provide us with a few examples of these key issues, and how, why do you feel they are important?
I think some of the key issues is, number one, just meeting the state mandated requirements to meet the fifty-one-hundred housing units. I think that, that's obviously a huge issue, because there's potential for steep fines to the city. What was, sorry, what was the, there was, I think, two parts to the question?
Well, just, just, what, what do you think are the key, what are the key issues that the Planning Commission is working on, and why do you think they are important?
Okay. And, and that's important just to the overall growth of the city, growth, but at the same time managing how that's going to impact, as, as we talked about before, security, traffic, accessibility, those types of things. I think the other issue that they're dealing with is, related to that, is projects that are in play now. So, for example, Sunset's purchase of Chevron and that development, and the, the number of years that plan's going to take, and, and managing to ensure that that's going to get the funding, and that it's going to go in a stepwise fashion that's acceptable to the city and to the community as well. I think that, that's a big issue. I think the third issue is ensuring that as we're building out the housing to support the community and meet the state requirements, we also have to have a lens with, what are the implications to other development in the community related to commercial space, small business, and ensuring that that's being grown as well, and ensuring that there's a robust balance in terms of opportunities for the people coming into the community to have access to the right services, to businesses that are going to be needed to support the community as well. So, having that balance, because, you know, there's only a certain amount of land where we can develop here, and in making sure that we have that balance, so that the growth of the community is also not only to hit those state targets in terms of housing and affordability, but we've also got to make sure that the city is able to generate revenue from business and to support the community in that way as well, and making sure that that's balanced and we're providing the right services for the community as it grows as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Over to Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Don. Thank you for applying for this position. My question for you, please share why you are interested in serving on the Planning Commission. In your response, include your understanding of commission's legal role, as well as your knowledge of its financial conflict of interest rules and ethical responsibilities.
You know, ethical responsibility is to ensure that we're doing, everything's in a, in a legal and compliant manner, just in terms of the state, city guidelines, laws, regulations. So, that's from an ethics standpoint, having the highest degree of ethics around that. In terms of the, the financial component, I understand we have to, you know, ensure that we're not in any conflict of interest in terms of our financial investments, and if we're put on the Planning Commission, in our role to make sure we don't have conflict with anything that's going on in terms of any of the development here. And so, from that standpoint, ensure that there's, you know, fiduciary responsibility to ensure that there are any conflicts of interest in the decision-making that goes on. And then, what was the third, third part of it?
Commission's legal role.
Yeah, our, the, the legal role is, is really to ensure that we're meeting the legal standards of the state requirements, and ensuring as a city, we're driving to those legal guidelines set forth by the state, and that from a city standpoint, we're ensuring that those developments and what we're doing meet the city regulations and city guidelines as well. So, I think, you know, balancing those two things together, and ensuring that we're, we're doing that in a manner that meets all the, the laws and regulations from a, from a city and the development standpoint, but then also the, the state requirements from a legal standpoint as well, in terms of meeting the housing numbers.
Thank you.
All right. We've got two more questions, and the first one will be by Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you. So, my second question is, we often focus on the logistical aspects of land use and development, and may overlook the human factor. What kind of services and resources would you propose we bring forward to ensure that new, non-traditional community members feel welcome and thrive in San Ramon? How would you make this come to fruition? Please be specific.
I think we have to look at the, the demographics coming in, in terms of how that's evolved within the city, to understand some of the potential services that we may need in terms of, for instance, there's a new retirement community that's been built, so understandings of the, the needs of that community in terms of transportation, in terms of medical support, activities, and those types of things. I think the way that we can, you know, manage that specifically is engaging with that group as an example, but also understanding, you know, their needs, but then also understanding what existing services there are and what gaps we may have, and then work to manage those gaps, as one example. I think then, from a demographic standpoint, we need to understand the demographics in terms of, you know, cultural mix within the community, age mix within the community, to ensure that we're providing the right services overall from, from that standpoint as well, to ensure that, you know, for, we have a, a lower population of students and underrepresentation in the student body in some areas, how is that going to change over time, and how can we support that? What types of services may need to be engaged from, from, for kids, you know, elementary through high school, and ensuring that they have the right services, whether it's, you know, library services, tutoring services, after-school activities, and again, doing some type of gap analysis to understand what we have now, and is it meeting the needs of the current demographics and, and age groups, and where those gaps are, and how we can work with small, medium business who may offer those services to bring them into the community as well. And then I think from a cultural standpoint, the city does a great job of acknowledging and having various cultural events to support the demographics of the city. I think I see a lot of it here in City Hall and around the community. I know in the schools, our son through, you know, elementary through middle and now starting high school, there's always a great diverse, diversity of celebration, and so I think engagement with the community to understand that, and what may be plausible to offer services related to that from a cultural standpoint, as well as, you know, that can get from a, to a business standpoint as well, in terms of what may be, you know, germane to a different demographics that are coming to the community, and if they are served appropriately or not.
Thank you.
All right, Don, here's the last question. When you think about San Ramon's neighborhoods and commercial areas, what stands out to you as the city's biggest strengths and challenges?
I think the biggest strength is, is we've got a very vibrant city, you know, it's a great mix of age groups. You've got a, a young population, although I know student enrollment's down, but you see a lot of kids out. I see a lot of families out, and I see, you know, older generations of folks, and I know, you know, we have the new retirement community here. My mom used to be at the retirement community on Bolinger and Crow Canyon. So, I think it's a great mix of population that we have, and so there's, there's a, a great, there's, I see it's very vibrant. There's a lot of people out all the time, they feel safe, they're out walking, they're out with their families, spending time at the lot, or spending time in the parks, and I think there's a lot of, you know, great, great greenery that people can take advantage of. And from a commercial standpoint, I think we've done, there's been a really good job done of supporting small business, but having tenants that can, you know, provide that kind of base, if you will, so like a crate and barrel, something to then grow from. And so, I think that's, that's great. I think from some of the weaknesses, I think the, the city is, I think we're seeing a lot of small businesses struggle, and I see a lot of turnover happening over where, near Costco and where the, the Petco is. A lot of stores have come and gone, there's a lot of openings and leases for sale. I see the same thing happening at Blackhawk. So, I think one of the weaknesses is, we've got to understand why that is, and what the, what we can do more as a city and a planning commission to bring small, smaller businesses and ensure that they're going to stick, and we don't have the high turnover rate, because that's going to be critical as we grow out the community, and from a revenue standpoint. So, I think that's, that's a weakness. I think there's, there should be more opportunity to look into that, and to see how do we support that, grow that, and support businesses. I, I think the other thing is that I've seen in the twenty years that I've been here, I think that the demographics have changed quite a bit. I don't think we have as broad set of demographics as we used to as a community, so how can we influence a broader set of demographics to come into the community, engage here, and want to settle down here? Cost has a lot to do with it, so what can we do from affordable housing to just community engagement and bring a broader set of demographics here over time?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Don. All right. Uh, now you have an opportunity to kind of give a, a closing statement. Maybe there's something that, uh, you wanted to get out to us that, uh, didn't come out in the questions, but this is your chance. We'll give you two minutes for that as well.
Sure. Um, I, I think for me, it's just, uh, having the opportunity to support the city. I've really enjoyed the 20 years that I've been here. I see, I've seen a lot of great growth, a lot of development, um, and always enjoy being a part of the city. Uh, I want to see that continue. Obviously, our son, you know, he's got a, a long way to go. He's got high school, he's got college, he wants to return. So, how do we make the city affordable for students that want to return? Because it is such a vibrant, enjoyable community and I think the more people spend time here, the more that they enjoy being here and want to settle down here. And so, for me, this is, you know, an opportunity to engage with City Council, other members of the Planning Commission and the community to see how we can bring that forward over the next, you know, 20 years and support the city's growth and do it in a way that makes sense for the community to, to grow, to ser- to thrive, um, but balance to ensure that we've got a, a great community that is walkable, that has the services like transportation, that's easy to get around, that we make sure that it's a safe city and, and that we continue for people to want to settle here, to have families and for those children to then want to stay here as well. So, um, if you afford me the opportunity to join the Planning Commission, you know, I would love to get involved in that and, and help influence the development going forward for the next several years.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Uh, well, that's it in terms of the, the questions and everything and, uh, we're going to make a decision later on this evening and, uh, the word will get out to you, uh, by our, our clerk staff.
Perfect.
But thanks again for coming in again.
Yep. Thanks for having me back the second time.
Thanks for expressing your, your interest and, uh, uh, appreciate, uh, everything. So, thank you.
Thanks for all you guys.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, we're, we're still about 10, 10 minutes behind schedule, but...
Eight minutes, it looks like.
Yeah. But we're, we're doing okay.
Yeah.
Not too bad.
Yeah.
It's Dean F. Marisol's 25 question.
I do not.
After all the grief you give me on my question last time.
Oh, I love everyone.
Going to open it up for, uh, public comment, acknowledge any written, uh, public comment and go from there.
Public comment and then delivery, right?
Yeah.
He's up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's the next?
Bruce.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, then, you guys took a break a minute ago. I'm going to take a break right now.
Back from another break, we'll come back in the session. And I'd like to ask Joan if you have any additional information on our next candidate.
Yes, I do. Our next candidate, Bruce Als, unfortunately is now unable to attend. And he has asked that you consider his application for appointment.
Okay. So we'll consider by application only for Bruce Als?
Yes.
Okay. Then at this time, I would like to open up public comment. And do we have any speaker cards?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, we do.
Okay.
One speaker card from Sharaq Kathrani.
Okay.
So, thank you for the interviews. I thought it was pretty well designed and good questions by everyone. One point I think was missing was Don when he gave the interview last, he was considering for this. I think 19 of the resident had sent out emails on his support. So I thought everybody should take that point into consideration as well. Nothing else. That's all about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And so no other speaker cards? And we did get one written comment, correct? We, did everybody acknowledge getting that written comment?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we will, was that in our packet? I know we got an email that was in the packet as well.
Yes, it is before you in your packet. And it was also provided by email.
Okay.
I think there's one more person there who wants to make a comment, please.
No, I didn't close public comment.
Our next speaker is Pam Wallace.
Okay.
I would just like to make a comment that I would like to see support for Don Yacalas on the commission. I think just based on his background, his experience in mergers and acquisitions and merging organizations would lend itself well for the commission. So I would just like to see him involved on that planning commission.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. At this time then, I'm going to close public comment. And it's now before the council. And I think in the past, we've talked about some of the things that we were looking for. And just as a reminder, we're looking to, if we can, pick one planning commissioner, regular planning commissioner, and then one waitlisted. So anybody want to open up with what your considerations were? And we'll go from there.
I could go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
No, yeah. Sorry. Second time I cut you off. No, I thought the interviews went very well. That the questions from the panel were thought provoking. And the answers that I was looking for really wasn't, I wasn't looking for an answer. I think that's the point. I was looking for how the candidates answered the questions, how they thought about issues, how they presented well. And it, boy, it was really hard among all three. Among all three, they brought in very empathetic answers, very high emotional intelligence. They really, they really hit the points very well. And there was just a lot of consistency in their answers across the board. I think, you know, for me, I know the question that I asked, it was one of those where there wasn't a right answer, but I don't think anybody on the panel here asked a right or wrong answer. I think it was just, hey, let us know what you're thinking. How do you, how do you approach the situation? And a lot of the candidates really, they answered the call. And I was, I was very impressed. And I think this round will be much more difficult. But I was looking for how, how they were answering the questions, how they were thinking about it. And also that just their, not just their passion for the city, but really their, their knowledge. And I think a lot of their answers demonstrated, that demonstrated their knowledge for the city, it demonstrated their knowledge of the community, but more importantly, the neighborhood, the demographics of the people. So I really liked the multi-dimensional approach. A lot of our candidates answered the questions. And I was very appreciative that even I, I also take away, you know, could I learn something from them? And I have from each and every one of them. I actually took, took away something from them. So it's, when you could learn from that, I think it's, it's a great interview. So I, that's all from me, Mayor. That was it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Who'd like to speak next?
I can go.
Okay.
First and foremost, thank you very much to all applicants. I know it takes a lot of time, energy putting together all your application and preparing. And just to make sure that I respect, as such, our council, we respect, we make sure that we go through all your resumes, our applications, we read through before we come here. And then we make sure we spend our time and energy to listen and make sure that we process all the information. So we appreciate all your great work to come to this stage. And as council member Joanna said today, definitely all four applicants are definitely pretty strong. And they did have a good, strong community serving the thought process of community. That's definitely, we are very blessed to have residents like that who would like to help our community and city to grow and prepare ready for our future. Like Bruce, he brings a real world construction and execution experience in his evaluating feasibility. Don, he brings a lot of corporate scale mergers, acquisitions, as well as his interest in sports and his deep Santa Monica roots. That definitely makes a huge difference. And then Abhijit, he definitely notable leadership. And I see a lot of community education. He did, he did plan, he did plan academy, police academy, government 101. And also, he is experienced in volunteer services. That definitely stands out. And then Max, Max, we see him almost all the meetings here. And he has consistently participated in all our planning, as well as council meetings, demonstrated his commitment for preparation. So these, it's, again, we are very blessed to have candidates like these to step up. But, but one thing I would definitely like to mention is when we are doing planning commission, I definitely want to hear from the candidates about general plan. And Rina, if a planning commissioner doesn't understand that they are bound and they are supposed to be running the meetings, as well as making the decisions, they need to understand general plan. And they need to understand the terms of zoning. They need to understand the terms of Rina. So I, I hope all the future interviews, they, they do learn this one and prepare themselves for these kind of interviews. That will help us and help them to make decisions much easier. And once again, this is a great interview process today. So thanks once again.
Okay. Anyone else want to, just have any general comments?
Very briefly, I thought they were all well spoken, knowledgeable, showed a commitment to the community that we're looking for. And I just think it's, it's a tough choice when you have people that have served some, you know, they've been in the community, they're knowledgeable, they've taken the courses. It's important to me that, that, you know, you get involved in some of these courses we, we offer because I think it's really important to learn about the city. And that, to me, that gives you a leg up because you've spent that extra time in the classes and police academy and so on. It takes some time, but it shows your interest. So I, I think I was impressed by all the candidates.
All right. Marisol.
Okay. So I concur in terms of, well, first and foremost, I want to thank all of the candidates for applying and interviewing those that were able to come. But, and, you know, obviously this, I was very impressed with, with all of them. And, you know, I think what I was looking for is a few, that really, I wasn't necessarily looking for anything from the outset. I just wanted to learn more from them in a deeper level. And I definitely think that, you know, there were, you know, there was one that really stood out to me in terms of global thinking. And what I mean by that is understand, thinking about things, not just from a logistical, you know, you know, planning and development perspective, but also understanding the human interpersonal socioeconomic side. It's very important to understand those things when we're planning, if we want people to have a, continue to have a vibrant, thriving community like we do today. And, and I looked for depth of knowledge. And I think, you know, there were one candidate that really kind of stood out to me more in terms of really understanding, you know, things about filing and ethics, a conflict of interest, fines and fees and what those actually mean. And, and that same candidate showed a great deal of passion, just passion, and a fresh view to planning and development. And so, for, I really, really enjoyed, I think I was very impressed with Max. And the second person is a little harder to decide, but I am split somewhat between Don and Abhijit because I think they both bring more from a business perspective, which is great, but they are also so similar in many ways. Because if we're talking, but I think Abhijit, let me see. I just want to make sure. Abhijit did, like as Vice Mayor Veros mentioned, he did do police academy, planning academy, and government 101. I don't see that being the case with Don. But I think they're both very similar. And it would be hard for me to discern on that one at this juncture unless somebody has sort of, wants to contribute a little bit more of a deciding factor on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, you know, some of the things I was looking for was, you know, basic knowledge of planning, basic, you know, understanding of the planning commissioner role, land use, and some of our city policies and things like that. Just general knowledge of the city. And do they really, have they really been paying attention? Do they really know our city? That's, that's kind of where my questions were going. And I looked at their involvement in the community as well. You know, just in the application, I was looking at, you know, at their relevant experience and their, their jobs and in the past, the city courses, I always look at that. Although I, I'll offer a little different perspective on the city courses that, you know, anybody can take the city courses. And it does give you a, a good grounding, and it does demonstrate an interest in things of the city. So I, that's why we always encourage people to do it. But, you know, it's not a golden ticket just because you got, you're taking all the city courses. I guess I'll, I'll put it that way. And I also looked at, you know, education training, like I said, knowledge of planning and zoning, community involvement, and, and just, you know, and did they have any kind of concerns that, that might come out to me? Whether it's a conflict of interest because of their, the type of job they're in and, and things like that? Would they have to recuse themselves from some of the issues and things like that that are going to go before the planning commission? So, and, and also just sort of a general, was there a general understanding of, you know, the impact of our state laws and, and things like that? Because I think there, there is a lot of misunderstanding that, that you can, we have all the discretion that we may have had 20 or 30 years ago. And thing, that landscape has changed with all the different new housing laws and things like that. So I think they were all decent candidates. One stood out absolutely for me during the process. I, you know, considering Bruce's application by application only, so he didn't have the advantage of coming in and answering the questions. But as you recall, we did see him in a previous interview as well. So take that into consideration tonight as we deliberate. So I guess, you know, we, I didn't ask you to kind of give me your, your favorite, but I, I think, let's talk about how we want to kind of do this initial selection for the primary candidate. And I, I, I've got one that stood out to me. And I think, Marisol, you had one that stood out to you, you mentioned. I, we've got a score sheet in front of us. Again, I'd rather not do a one, two, three, four at this point. I'd rather just identify, who do you think is the planning commissioner? Do, can we get, you know, put score on the vote sheet, just put an X by the person you think knocked it out of park, or is that person? Or leave it blank if you don't think we had a candidate for tonight. And, and then, then we'll talk about the waitlist.
That sounds good, Mayor.
Okay. So you got a score sheet in your packet. And if we, if we can't come to some kind of a consensus in the, this first go around, then, then let's talk about who you picked and, and make a strong case for that person. And then we will see if anybody changes their mind. But for now, let's pick your number one. In the, in the blue packet?
I think, no. I think I must have buried it underneath here. I think I buried it.
Okay. Again, if you didn't have anybody, leave a blank. If you had a clear standout, let's see if we can get a quorum or consensus. You don't have to rank them. Just, just, just mark the one person you want.
Richard wants to.
I didn't realize you'd already handed it out.
You need to be energetic. That's your question, yes.
Okay, the ballots have been tallied.
Okay. Can you please provide results of this initial round?
We have five votes for Max Zhang.
Okay. Then, well, we'll congratulate Max. Max will be the next planning commissioner. Can I, let's, before we move on to waitlist, can I just get a motion that it'll be Max? And this is for a term, help me out here.
June of 2029.
Till June of 2029? Okay. All right. Can I get a motion that'll be Max Zhang for planning commission for a term through June of 2029?
So move.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Next course of business is, do we, generally, do we think we have enough for a waitlisted person? And this one, I guess we can do the same thing. If you think there's a clear candidate, indicate it. And if we can't come to a quorum on that, then we will deliberate. Okay? So just put in your one vote. This might be a little tougher. We'll see how this goes.
I was hoping there was a little more deliberation before we voted on this.
Well, we can't. I'm happy to do, do you want to do some more comments and deliberation on this?
I had asked if others wanted to provide some perspective on that because I was really, really, really undecided on this.
Let's, let's hold off on collecting them for now. Yeah. Yeah. If there was some concern as to one versus another, if anybody wants to speak strongly for one or another, or, or no one at all on the waitlist, I'd like to hear that too. But otherwise, we'll just do the, the closed ballot again.
See, as I mentioned, my, my procedure, or all the time, I keep, even repeated in the past, that for a planning commissioner, if they don't, if they don't use the term of general plan in their whole interview, I cannot consider them as a planning commissioner. So that's my.
So which way are you inclined, who you're referring to? Because I have no idea. That's why I'm trying to get feedback from all of you.
So there is one candidate for, for, see, I understand Don got a lot of community roots. He's really did a lot of volunteer work, as well as his 20 years Santa Monica resident. And he's a sports coach. I love sports, so I love sports coaches. He's also been very good in negotiation and all those. But then, in throughout his interview, he didn't mention anything about general plan. He didn't mention about arena. He didn't mention about zoning. Those are the critical pieces that you use as a guideline, as a constitution, when you're making decisions on, in, when you're sitting in the planning commission. If someone doesn't have an idea of general plan, there is no way you can become a planning commissioner. So that's, I, I'm telling you, not only now, in the future, whoever is going to attend the interviews for planning commission, please, please prepare and make sure you understand because planning commission is not about opinions. Planning commission is not about consensus, just because certain group people want certain things. No. Planning commission is about law, following rules, guidelines. Okay? So they need to understand, if there is any mistake is done by planning commission, it can impact whole city. You know? Not just the council, but, because when, if there is a mistake, if the city gets sued for that mistake, then all the taxpayers are going to pay for it. You know? So that's why we need to make sure that whoever is going to be our planning commissioners, they need to understand those, that is more important. It's not about sentiments and emotions. This doesn't come like that. If it is some other committees, commissions, that, that may be, work out pretty good. But planning commission is not like that. Just because there is a group of people want certain person doesn't mean it is going that way. Okay? So it is our responsibility as a council members to make sure we choose who is going to be our eyes and ears. Right? So in that, that's the only reason I, I, I may not go with Don.
Thank you for that. Richard or Robert or Mayor?
No, I just want to hear whatever anyone else has got to say. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to provide my, and I understand everything you're saying. I, I will. Did you want to?
No, I'm, I'm trying to get feedback from all of you because I gave mine already.
Yeah. Well, I, I thought, we already voted on Max. I thought he was a clear standout. If, if we had another one like Max, it, you know, but we, we didn't. And so it's really, you know, what's the next best? Is, is there somebody that will fill that waitlisted role? And I heard what you said about Don. One thing I heard, and I'd, I'd like anyone else's perspective on this, but I actually thought something you said also applied to Abhijit, which was the, you know, he was talking about the difference between laws and requirements, and then got to really listen to the public. He really emphasized, you got to listen to the public, which is absolutely true. But he almost came across to me as, well, even in spite of the laws, if the public really wants something, you got to go that direction. Now, I don't know if you guys picked up, picked, read that the same way, and I might have misread that. But that, that gave me a little bit of concern when he said that. But otherwise, I think he was, Abhijit was very articulate in, in a lot of what he had to say, and demonstrated that he'd done some homework. He, he used some, you know, he demonstrated that he, he knew about our plans, and he knew some of the issues that we, the city is facing. Yeah. I'll just kind of leave it at that. So I, I thought he did a, a strong performance, but I was a little concerned about the one thing. I don't know if that's a, if I misread that, or if that was even a game changer, so. Any other thoughts on, I mean, because we're really just talking about, unless anyone wants to fight for Bruce by application only, we're really just talking about the difference between Don and Abhijit here for waitlist.
Any inclination?
Anybody? Okay. All right. Then, no, we've closed public comment. All right. So let's, let's go ahead. If you got nothing else, then let's go ahead and mark your score sheets, and we'll collect them up.
You said your next platform question next time?
The ballots have been tallied.
Okay, please give us what, what you got for the results, please.
So we have four council members who have chosen an applicant. Four, I'm sorry, four out of the five. We had four that were filled in and one was blank. The vote came out as one for Don and three for Abhijit.
Okay. All right, so we've got, we've got a quorum that would go for Abhijit. And so do we, can we, let's, unless there's any more discussion?
I move a motion.
entertain a motion.
I move a motion.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, the motion by Vice Mayor Veros, second by Councilmember Rubio. This would be for Abhijit. For a term, same, it's, same, it's waitlisted up until the next time we go out for planning commission.
So that would be June of 2027.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that, is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay.
Agree. So that person will be waitlist, a waitlisted person until June of 2027?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion carries. We have a new planning commissioner and we have a waitlisted one. All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And have a good evening.
Thank you.